Different themes, you could have like a topical theme, you could have a, you know.
All right, we're good to go.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering how Danielle is doing marriages when we're, have not yet authorized her to do marriages.
I'm still authorized to issue the licenses, so I've been issuing marriage licenses and everyone has been emailing us nonstop.
Uh huh. Oh, so you're doing the marriage licenses, but not the marriage ceremonies?
No.
But, but the resolutions on the agenda are for you to be able to do the ceremonies?
Yes, ma'am.
And so you will be able to do them via Zoom, is that it?
Yep.
Based on how that executive order is written, yes.
Interesting.
Interesting. I'm gonna start looking for good backgrounds for you, Danielle.
All right.
Okay, we're good to go?
We're good to go. Um, just to let you know who's here, uh, we have our Corporation Counsel Brett Williams, Majority Leader Judy Duchesne, Richard Conti Owusu, Kathy Fahey, Corey Ellis, Derek Johnson, Joe Igo, Joyce Love, Michael Bryan, Sonia Frederick, Tom Howie. Looks like we're just missing Alfredo Ballerin.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, JR, welcome to the Monday, excuse me.
Can I, can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? Why can't I do the gallery view?
Uh, probably because Michelle's sharing her screen.
Michelle has to get rid of the agenda.
When someone's, when someone's sharing their screen, you can only see the, some things on the side on the computer. I'm not sure on the phone, you might not be able to see any of the faces.
Jamelle Robinson has just entered too. Sorry about that.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah, I'm just wonder, I'm just wondering if it complies with the meeting. If people can't see us all.
No, it does, um, because when you do the recording, it shows a gallery view.
Okay.
Oh, that's cool, along with the screen sharing?
Yep.
Okay, okay, okay. So, uh, welcome everyone to the Wednesday, April 29th Comic Con Council Caucus. Mr. Ellis here.
He is.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm here. Let's go. All right, just getting right into the agenda. We'll have, well, uh, meeting minutes from our April 20th meeting, 20. For passage to move. Moving next on to local laws. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm working off my phone, my internet is, is down. I apologize. Uh, okay, so local laws introduced by Ms. Frederick, local law F. Ms. Frederick, you care to speak regarding that?
Yeah, thank you. This is a local law to, um, amending Article 16 of the Chapter 333 Taxation for the Code City of Albany, providing an exemption to first time homeowners within the city. Um, this has been something that was previously before by prior councils. Um, through research and with working with JR, we found that it was sunset as of 2016. So basically I'm putting this forth so that we can, um, rule this out again and make sure that our first time home buyers in the city are getting exemption. Basically what would occur is they would have a five year exemption towards a property tax law and each year it would decrease in the amount of exemption they receive automatically getting up to baseline. It's consistent with prior years and it's for two calendar year period and it's really to encourage, um, first time homeownership in the city. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a quick question. On the, um, the dollar amount for the purchase price, which actually went down 10,000 from the previous version, but looking in the state law, there, the state law reference is the formula. So I'm wondering where, where the dollar amount from the previous, is that dollar amount adjusted annually? Does anyone know?
Yeah, one second. Um, JR, do you?
I'm trying to pull it up right now. Is, it's a whole formulary through Sony May, um, the State of New York Mortgage Assistance Program that comes up with these numbers. I don't.
My basic question is, um, since it's a, it's a formula based dollar amount and it's not, uh, that dollar amount is not in the state law. And I don't know if that is adjusted annually. Should we cross-reference the formula provisions in the state law as opposed to be putting in a specific dollar amount?
I would be up to making that amendment.
Cause I think the way it works is that this program is issued through, um, it's authorized by the RPCL as it is and it's the same
Right.
we have. So it, I, I believe it's the same, it's not adjusted every year. It stays the same during the course of the program. So when it sunsets, it's redone, but I'm trying to find the, um, the ledger now that has it. And I'll share that with the council once I get.
Yeah, okay, I mean, just something to look at, um, and, and, you know, don't know why it went down 10,000 from the last time we did this, the old one, but, um, just look at that and see if it makes more sense to cross-reference the language rather than putting a specific dollar amount in.
Yeah, cause, um, I was shocked when it, to see it went down too. I just don't know where the number came originally and I was trying to find the number that was already in statute before when I was researching this, but I couldn't find it. But that's the number as of now in the Sony May program.
Okay.
Okay, that'll be going to finance. All right, next, uh, onto local law as hell. Down to, uh, number three. Uh, Richard, did you wish to move?
Yeah, so the, um, that moved out of committee. So we, the committee met on Monday, um, discussed it. All members were there and it was voted out with a positive recommendation, uh, unanimous vote. So I'd like to move that for passage on Monday.
Okay, so under local laws, number three will be passed. Strong to pass ordinance is held on to resolutions introduced. Thirty seven fifty one twenty by Mr. Anani, Bike Month. You want to speak, Mr. Anani?
Oh, yes. Um, this is something that I've been, uh, passing over the past couple of years that I've been on council. I think it's, uh, important that, uh, we promote alternate, alternative modes of transportation as relates to making sure that our city and there are individuals who live in the city who promote making sure that our city is bicycle friendly, particularly the mayor and my predecessor. And there are several people all across the city who would like to see, um, our city become more bicycle friendly. So again, this is a resolution to bring awareness here in our city to encourage individuals, um, to utilize alternatives modes of transportation and also encourage into the city and also administration to built in our infrastructure to make sure that we have a bicycle friendly city. So essentially just a resolution encouraging, um, bike, bicycle month here in the city of Albany. And this is not unique, many cities pass these resolutions and I just want to make sure that we continue doing our part here as a city, as electeds.
Okay, thank you. That'll be a pass. All, all members, co-sponsors?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay, uh, next resolution by Mr. Anani, thirty eight fifty one twenty, uh, COVID rental assistance, Mr. Anani?
Yeah, um, thank you. So as many of you are aware, we're in this, uh, huge pandemic. Many of our marginalized individuals and low and working poor are struggling. Last week, over four point, uh, four point four million people filed for unemployment. This resolution is essentially, um, to make sure that the ESG money that we, we are going to be receiving from the CARE Act goes as a direct assistance. Many of our residents here in the city of Albany are struggling to pay rent. It was reported that, uh, 35% of Americans didn't pay rent last April, I mean this April. And I think that those trend is also going to, uh, carry on moving forward. The intent of this resolution is to make it very clear to individuals who are renters and who are struggling that we see them, we care about them, uh, we understand the challenges that they're facing and that with the ESG money, emergency solution grant money that's coming into our city, um, that a portion of that money could be used towards a direct assistance.
Okay, uh, any questions?
So I actually did reach out to Fay Andrews on this just to try to understand, because this, this is another pot of money we got. Aside from the CDBG money we got, um, I know she's still waiting for guidance in terms of moving out, but, uh, expects that we will be using it for rental assistance. Just one observation in, in, you know, we might want, in situations like this where there's a timeliness on it, in terms of expressing the council's positions or, uh, recommendations that we might sometimes want to consider, uh, letter, maybe sign on letters or something along those lines, which can be done in a much more timely basis, especially when there's a timeframe and getting this federal money out, rather than doing the resolutions all the time. Just an observation.
Well, though, thank you for, um, that observation, Richard, and, uh, that's something that I actually went back and forth with. But as it relates to, uh, why we went this route with the resolution, I think is important. Again, uh, to have something on record as a body, um, to let renters know that we, we understand the challenges that they're going through. We see their struggle and that we want to make sure that, um, you know, with this ESG money, that a portion is to go to alleviate the burden that they faced.
Yeah, I have no, I, I have no problem with the resolution. I'll vote for it. I'll even sponsor, co-sponsor it. I'm just saying, you know, you can do, actually do both, uh, but I'm just saying sometimes in terms of, uh, some issues that are timely, you might, you know, uh, the point is getting the council's position expressed in as timely a manner as possible.
Gotcha.
That we want to get that out. Luckily Fay was already going in this direction anyway, uh, so this would reinforce that, but, um, just making an observation that, you know, there are a lot of different ways to express the council's position, uh, and, you know, s- some might be more timely than others.
Yeah.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Hey, so that would be a pass?
Kelly?
Wait, we have Kelly, we have, um, we have Tom Howie and Michael Bryan who raised their hands.
Sure, um, I just have a fast question. Uh, maybe it won't be fast. The money that comes in, is it guaranteed that's going to go to landlord to pay the rent? Is there some kind of checks and balances there? Because, um, there is a lot of hurt people that are owner occupied rentals and, you know, when they can't make their mortgage payment, it causes problems. So I'm just curious, because I don't know about the program. Does, you know, do they cut a check to the, to the landlord or, you know, how does that work?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, that's a good question. So what happens is that, um, the ESG money is going to go into the city account and our, um, the Albany Community Development Agency, Fay Andrews Company will cut a check to an organization that deals with rental assistance. So what happens is that the, the organization, okay, so let's say someone is being evicted. They will go to the organization that, uh, that helps with rental assistance. And when they go to that organization, there are a list of paperwork and forms that they have to fill out. Once that organization determined that these, uh, the individual need assistance, they would, um, invoice Fay Andrews Organization, Albany Community Development Agency. And then Fay Andrews Organization, Albany Community Development Agency would then bill, um, the housing and urban development. And then that, that's how it worked. But essentially the money, uh, goes essentially right directly to the landlord.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a process. So you just don't come in to say, hey, I need rental assistance. There's a paperwork form that you have to fill out. There's a whole host of background stuff. It's, it's quite a process, actually.
It sounds complicated. Is there a lot of middle people in there, um, and are they grabbing a part of the pie or?
Repeat that question again?
The agencies, the agencies that help the people that don't have money, how do they exist? Are they volunteer or?
I think it's a mixture of both. Some of them are staffed, uh, some of it are grant funded, but overall it's a mixture of both. There are some volunteers who help out, particularly the tenants association. I think there are some individuals who volunteer, but they also have organize, uh, organizations that also, uh, fully staffed.
United Tenants for example.
Yeah, yes, this is, this is funding, I mean, to supplement existing funding, we already get in this category. And so some, the existing funding we get currently, as I understand it, is already used for this. So there is an existing framework. This would be able to supplement what we're already doing. And it has, the, the funding is, has broader uses than just rental assistance. It can also be provided for homeless, emergency shelter, things of that nature as well.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Brien had his hand up.
Yeah, um, hello? Yeah, uh, that was a bit of follow-up like what, uh, Richard was saying. I suspect that there are other designated beneficiaries of this and I don't know if there's a priority list as to who comes first, but exactly, I was thinking of homeless, uh, certainly. And there's probably some other earmarks that the CARES Act has. I'm not that familiar with it to know, but that's a question which I put out there. I certainly like the concept and as a statement of, uh, you know, a statement of interest. I, I think it's very good that we either do a letter or a resolution, but I'm sure that there are a lot of, uh, provisions that come with the CARES Act that we don't want to violate. And I was also going to ask the question, obviously I, I assume United Tenants would play a big part in determining who deserves the rental assistance, but is the Albany Housing Authority eligible for any of this? Because even though most of their budget comes from federal funding, the tenants have to pay a certain proportion. And if those tenants can't pay it, does the housing authority have its own CARES Act or will some of this money go to them? Probably Kelly might know.
Yeah, Kelly, I was just about to say that.
Not sure, but I, I'll check and get back to everyone.
Okay. But I did reach out to Steve Longo, um, as it relates to actually making them, um, the organization that administer this ESG funding. And he expressed to me that the organization in his purview, that would be best to organize, uh, to administer this is, uh, the Albany Community Development Agency, because they have this type of, uh, grants available that they usually operate out of. They have a framework that they have in place. So he actually suggested, um, recommend and given the money to, uh, either, uh, our age, uh, all community, Albany Community Development Agency, so they could administer it. But also another thing is that, uh, the Albany Community Development Agencies go to fund that money to several organizations, several entities. Uh, Albany Community Housing is already sending money to the tenants association. I think they wrote a check for $45,000 to kind of help with individuals who are facing, um, evictions and landlord tenant issues, those type of things. So I think from the Albany Housing standpoint, they want to make sure that other organizations are, uh, handling these crises.
Right, that's correct. We just, uh, did a resolution in the housing.
Yeah, just to go back. This, this money goes to an existing program administered by the ACDA. It's a supplemental funding that we already received. So it's not creating a new program or anything like that. It's an existing program. And the money is supplementing that with the intent that it gets out faster that way. It does support, you know, housing, shelter, housing, homeless, uh, eviction prevention, rental assistance and all of that. So, Mike, we're not creating, it's not creating something brand new. It goes into supplement.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we aren't, we aren't monkeying up any kind of a formulary that's in place, but I guess we're not.
Okay. I worked with, I worked closely with, um, Councilman Anani on this, uh, make sure, because there was concern when this first came out about that. So we, that's why we made this as a non-binding, as a huge recommendation on it.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Ballerin?
We have Councilman John, I have the queue right here. We have Councilman Johnson who's next.
Okay.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So, um, just a, um, a question for, um, Councilman Anani. Speaking of, you know, looking through the, um, frame of equity, is it a, a breakdown of where these monies actually go? Because I hear, um, you have to submit a, uh, a proposal, right? You have to apply for it.
Yes, yes, you do. Um, there is various organizations that I don't have it, um, the organizations that, um, ACD usually typically work with. But I'm, actually, that's a good question. I am curious as it relates to where the money goes, but I believe it goes by first come, first served, come basis. Um, so if an individual was able to fill out the paperwork and, and show that they need assistance as relates to rental, they would apply and then they would take it from there. But to your question, that is, that, that, that's a, that's a good question and I'm kind of curious to see where majority of this rental assistance, what neighborhoods or specifically what demographics actually go towards to.
But it's, it's based on income eligibility.
It's all based on income eligibility.
So it's citywide, but it's based on income eligibility.
I get that, but what, like, and, 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 you know, I have a great relationship with Fay Andrews, but what, like, what type of vehicle are they using to get that information out, you know, to, to the, um, to the people that could benefit from that?
Right, well, I, for one, uh, Fay sent out a, uh, what do you call it there? A survey for, uh, for, for public input on this. I don't, I don't know if members got it. I got it from someone else. I didn't get it from, from her.
I got it where they asked, um, questions.
Yeah, yeah.
The needs assessment.
Yeah.
Yes, I heard it.
Right, and that, and that, uh, and that actually came up in the leadership meeting. We, we, we need more input, more input into how that money's going to be, uh, put out.
And, um, as it relates to Derek, your question, um, again, one of the challenges I believe here in the city of Albany, facility's government is that sometimes we have these great programs, we have these wonderful initiatives, but we, people never hear about it. Where, and this is an example of it, but I think that if all of us as council members could echo that to our respective communities, that this money is coming and if you need assistance, here is the process to help. So to your question, I'm going to echo those sentiments to, uh, Fay Andrews, to make sure that the organization that they're working with are out there in the community, letting people know that the money has arrived and if they need assistance to go about it.
Yeah, and then she, she said she, she will post this information online so that we will have that.
Yes.
Once the program is put together and so members will have that hopefully and they will be able to also use that with their constituents.
Yes. Um, next we have, uh, Councilwoman Duchesne.
So Kelly just kind of covered what my, but my question is, do we want to have a little bit more dialogue right now about, um, how that money otherwise should be used? I mean, the surveys, the surveys can be good, but I think sometimes, um, fleshing out ideas and, you know, brainstorming a little bit, um, about and understanding it a little bit better. Um, and so, uh, you know, the question is, do we want to take a little bit of time now to have that conversation? Would people like me to schedule a Housing and Community Development Committee meeting with Fay to discuss that? And I, and I would want to do that, you know, fairly quickly, um, if we want to go that route. But do people have, do people have other thoughts about how this money should be used?
All right, next question.
I think, I think we were waiting for someone to direct us who can speak next. I think, uh, am I, am I on mute yet? Am I off mute?
I'm on mute, yeah.
I'm off mute. So I think that, I think people were waiting, uh, for those directions. Um, is it okay if I speak?
Yeah.
Okay, I already started.
Tiny phone. I'm working off a little phone. I don't have a full screen, sorry.
No, uh, I do think it'd be a good idea, um, and that's part of what I was going to say, um, to get Fay in, to get a better idea of, um, what they have already, what surveys have already provided. And if you need to get more information out to more residents, so we can get, so all residents can, um, fill out the survey. You know, a strategy we should take, um, specifically with this. I have a couple of questions about the details of how it works, this, this program, so that we can get that program out to people, because, you know, a lot of people are out of work and a lot of people are in real strides right now and any assistance we can give them for them bake is the biggest fear every month is that first of the month rent. Um, so if, if this is a problem, we need to make sure we support it, but we also get the word out and understand the process. So when people come to us asking us who, who contacted, what the process is, we give them, you know, current critical information that, uh, people can count on. So I think, uh, Councilwoman Duchesne, I think that'd be a great idea to have a meeting with, with Fay and, and be able to go into about this initiative, um, which I think is going to be critically needed in the next few months, um, and, and other initiatives, uh, that they're looking to use those funds for.
Well, I must say, uh, that I, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so, um, I echo the sentiments of, uh, Councilman Valero, I mean, Alfredo. I think, um, it is crucial that we do bring Fay in and I would also like her, if you could, to share the results of that survey. So we can see what the thoughts are reflected in it as well.
Yeah, um, Councilor, just to, as relates to the survey, they have also extended, uh, I was speaking to Fay before I actually got, uh, decided to sign on. They actually translated the survey into, um, Hispanic and other languages. So there's different languages. So it's going to take a while as relates to the, to see the results of that survey. But again, I agree with you all. If you guys want to have a meeting to discuss, um, the work that Fay Andrews is doing and what other grants are coming moving forward, um, you guys could do it.
Okay, uh, so we try to, and want to do that sooner rather than later. So, uh, Michelle, if you could, uh, work on that.
Yes, I'll reach out there.
With Judy, okay. But also council member, although everyone's home, so folks shouldn't have trouble making a meeting. So, so, all right, so we're, that's going to go to, uh, housing and, uh.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Yeah, I was going to ask if this was a pass or not.
No, oh.
Right, so now if we're going to go the housing route, it's going to go to the committee.
No, what I'm saying is, so Judy's question was more so to learn about programs and other programs moving forward out of ACDA. I thought this was going to be a pass. I just. I.
Was that your intention, Ms. Duchesne? You wanted to have.
To discuss this legislation, it's just more so to figure out what other, well, Judy can speak first of all.
So my, my thought was not to hold this legislation for that committee meeting, because this doesn't specify a specific amount. And I think that there is general consensus that having some amount of this money go for this. So I don't know why we would hold that up, but I think
Okay.
to, you know, my, my general thought was, this is just one piece then. What other guidance, what other conversations, what brainstorming do we want to do? So I'd like to go ahead with the committee, but allow this to move forward for passage, if that's all right with folks.
Okay, that's a, it'll be a pass and we'll, uh, try to get that meeting put together so we can have further discussion on the topic.
We have Alfredo.
Yeah. I, all I was going to say was I think it should be moved to a pass, so.
Yeah, it's a pass.
I was just going to say we should move it to a pass, so, um, I can go back on mute. Thank you.
Okay, on to the next resolutions, um, introduce thirty nine fifty, fifty one twenty and forty, forty fifty one twenty and forty five.
and forty, forty, fifty-one, twenty, and forty-five, excuse me, forty-one, fifty-one, twenty, are all, uh, resolutions by me to, uh, make, uh, Ms. Gillespie and her staff, uh, marriage officers. Danielle, you, you want to speak to this a little bit?
Well, we're just trying to provide an additional service to, um, city residents. Uh, with the court system being closed, there's so many people that were in, scheduled for civil ceremonies that had to miss their dates. We have to reissue their licenses. And, you know, it, it's just to promote, uh, goodwill and good feeling in the midst of a pandemic.
So Danielle.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have like, um, a stand, the standard script for the marriage ceremony?
And are people doing, doing any, are you doing any training on this?
It, it's not complicated, but I just.
It is not a comp, I'm sorry to cut you off, it is not a complicated process. NICOM has a standard script that municipalities have used in the past to, uh, officiate ceremony, so I'm making sure that those that are appointed will have the NICOM script. And then we're going to do ma, mock marriages in the office, just so people get used to, you know, pronouncing people husband and wife.
Okay, good, yeah, I think, I think a little bit of, it's a good idea.
Or other ways.
Pretend to get married.
Or, it's not always husband and wife.
Or husband, husband, wife and wife, you know.
Or when I was married, it was, you were now pronounced married.
Okay. Absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, those will be passes, uh, for the marriage officers. Well, that's it for the, the, um.
By the way, are these, are these resolutions appointing them indefinite time? I didn't print them out.
No, they're expiring August thirty-first, or when the emergency orders are, um, the, uh, yeah, taken back, they're ending.
Can I ask a question on that? Um, are city clerks, uh, typically marriage officers?
Not in second-class cities, um, and our population is under a million. So the only way for me to become a marriage officer is by legislative, um, action.
So I wonder, uh, if in your case, or in the case of the city clerk, it makes sense for us to, as a matter of course, to appoint the city clerk a marriage officer for, you know, the term.
You can appoint, I think, up to four years, right?
Terms can be four years.
Yeah. Something to think about.
Can I just say one thing? If you out there don't like hearing your city be called a second-class city, do the sentence. Just had to say that, because that, that, he, hearing being called a second-class city, you know, I don't like that either.
I'm with Alfredo. I initially took offense to that, and then I, you know, I started reading, I was like, oh, that's what they mean.
Take that one up with the legislature, unfortunately.
Law, I agree.
Well, no, second-class.
All right.
So I just want to say, um, a, a consideration, I think that this is a, a great experiment in having them, uh, be able to do this, but a consideration in terms of automatically appointing them is then that becomes the expectation that they're available. And, um, and it can disrupt workflow, uh, and that kind of thing. So it, some thought needs to be given to whether we want to do that on a long-term basis because of that kind of thing.
And if, if I can share with you, it would, we would mirror what the court system does, and we would keep a calendar. So, uh, the city clerk, if that's the direction that the common council chooses to go in, would always be the marriage officer for that term. I wouldn't necessarily have staff members on hand that would provide, uh, the officiating part of the ceremony. So they'd have to schedule like everybody else would have to schedule to keep it equitable and so that we could manage, you know, workflows.
Okay, good.
Um, I, I remember we did this for Davis, uh, a few months ago. Why don't we do it for all elected officials in Kate, in this timing, so that we don't have shoulders of people? You know, if someone needs to get married, and you've got fifteen of us that can do the, and sign off. You know, as some of those recently married, I would be a little upset right now if I was told I couldn't, I can't get married myself. So, um, you know, I think, you know, whatever we can do to make the, the processes easy and smooth for all residents, I would support.
Alfredo just wants to marry people.
I mean, in the past, we, we have only, we have done, we have designated members from time to time. Um, but for a specific purpose, and just generally have not done the like, year or four-year appointment. Um, and I, it goes back many years, I think we were concerned about possible abuse or, because you can also make, you can also charge. So I think there were some concerns embedded in that as well, and that was one of the reasons why we were doing it on an as-needed basis for a specific occasion, but that, that's some of the history.
Yeah, and if, with regard to the charging, um, if the marriage officer draws a salary from the city, then they're not actually allowed to charge.
Okay.
That was something that, that was one of the big things that we were working on when we were doing this resolution. Myself and Brett worked very close with Danielle on this to make sure that it was all lawful and legal on this.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, um, before we move on, uh, Judy, you want to, uh, mention, uh, you, you had that idea about the resolution for the food supply chain. You want to speak about that now?
I, I have had it in my head, and I have composed it at night, you know, while lying awake, but I haven't put it down on paper. I want to do up a resolution imploring, uh, the president, Congress, our governor, state legislature, county, et cetera, to, um, take every action, take immediate action to ensure the safety and security of the nation's, uh, food supply, the equitable distribution of food resources, and the health and safety of all food workers through the entire supply chain. I've been aware, um, uh, I, I think, well, I think that you're all aware of the fact that there's, um, issues with regard to food, uh, being unharvested, milk being dumped, um, cattle, um, are now, um, being, uh, sold to feedlots, uh, at, at, uh, no profit, uh, because the freezers are full. There's not a way to process it, um, because it, you know, usually goes to, uh, restaurants. So, um, and, and there's also, you know, likely and potentially a lot of issues with regard to us, um, obtaining food from other countries. Um, as different countries go through, uh, having problems with, uh, COVID nineteen, we do get a lot of our, uh, food from, um, the southern hemisphere, and there is increasing, proportion of people, um, having COVID, uh, being, testing positive for COVID, uh, in those countries and increasing deaths, et cetera. So, um, I also have concerns, so often what happens, or, or the predictions are that in a pandemic, you wind up having scarce resources, uh, inflation, uh, checks, uh, kicks in. Some people, um, can afford the food, others can't, you wind up having increasing lines. Uh, there's an inequitable, uh, distribution of, of food. And part of what just happened now, in order to address this, and I don't know that it's really to address it so much as to help certain, uh, constituents of, uh, the president. Now, uh, food care workers are being ordered back to work despite their concerns about the lack of safety. And even though there's, you know, plants that have had, uh, eight hundred COVID cases associated with them, these people, uh, need, um, social distancing, uh, and proper procedures, et cetera, to ensure their safety, uh, it's, um, really quite upsetting. That, uh, you know, these are some of the lowest-paid workers, um, that are then, um, being forced into conditions where, um, their health and potentially their lives are at stake. And, and that is where the War Powers Act is being used, is to force those people into those kinds of, uh, conditions. And, um, you know, so, uh, we need, we need a, a comprehensive approach to ensuring the, the security of the entire food supply chain. And to make sure that it, there is equitable, uh, distribution, so nobody goes hungry. I, I know that we have a country in which that happens every day, but, um, now increasing numbers of people are facing food insecurity, and so we need to address that. And I, but I think that we can't address all that at the, at the cost of the lives of people in the, uh, food supply chain. And there have got to be ways to be addressing all of this, um, while also helping, um, you know, food banks and, and, and stopping dumping of milk and, um, uh, preventing other products from, um, going to, uh, market. I think that, um, anyway, so, so I'm working on, on a resolution. Obviously, I have a lot of thoughts about it. And I just, I would like to, I just wanted to give Kelly a heads up and everybody a heads up that I'm working on this. Um, and that I hope that by tomorrow, um, I will have, um, a resolution to circulate to everybody. And, um, and, and I truly want input into, you know, what it is that I'm, uh, putting into this, because it's a little bit novel, um, and a difficult kind of situation. It will be a resolution that, that ends with asking it to be, um, uh, delivered to, um, our elected representatives, uh, you from the president, uh, down to, and including the mayor. And they're also asking, um, you know, for government agencies to, you know, focus and insist on this. This is now, my, my concern is that this is now potentially becoming as important of a threat to, uh, the stability of our country, uh, and our economy and the welfare of our residents as is the disease itself. Any questions or comments?
I got a fast comment, Judy, that I've been watching, uh, Governor Cuomo. And he's really upset about the dumping of the milk, about, you know, the farmers letting their stuff just rot in the fields and stuff. So I know there's some action on that part, but, um, you know, and I, I, I support, you know, where you're, you're going, because the food supply is probably the most important thing that we have, especially in the city. But I go back to, we, we just passed a resolution by local, and I think that is a safe way, and we should be encouraging our local farmers, you know, to continue to do what they're doing. So thank you.
Okay, and so, uh, I believe Ms. Douche is asking, uh, that we emcee that if it's prepared for Monday. We'd like, we'd like to move it.
I mean, it, it's all dependent upon the feedback that I get, um, but I wanted to give people that heads up, and I apologize for not getting to it. I had a little, um, cyber attack. We need something else.
Quick question, Judy. Richard, you know, kind of brought something up, which I, um, I was kind of thinking about. You know, since there's a sense of urgency with your request, why can't we just write a letter instead of a resolution?
Well, we could, um. Uh, I've started on drafting it as a resolution, and, um, there is a part of me that feels like in this particular case, since we're sending something to the legislators, et cetera, that a resolution has maybe a little bit more import to it than a letter signed by all of the council, individual council members. You know, perhaps we want to have one that is embossed, you know, for certain elected officials. Uh, you know, to, to, to make this point. So, yeah, I was thinking about that as, um, Richard was talking. Now, it is Wednesday, and, uh, you know, I will be looking, you know, I don't, I don't expect that we would get it out of house with the sign-offs on it before Monday in any case. So, again, I apologize for having this thought in my head and just being, uh, delayed. It's partially written at this point.
Well, whether it's a letter or a resolution, I thank you for putting.
It's a resolution, and I, and I would like.
I thank you for putting it together, because I think our, our most vulnerable workers, uh, have been exploited and not given proper protection, uh, in many of our industries is one of them. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so, uh, just moving on to our leadership discussions, the mayor gave us some updates. And I'll go through some, and then I'll have Ms. Farrell go through the others. We're in a hire and freeze, which is pretty obvious. That's, uh, one of the comments. Uh, she also mentioned, um, that they're, they're bringing back some of the workers that were at home, uh, to start taking care of the outdoor issues. Uh, the lawns, the, uh, yard waste and all of that stuff. Uh, again, and, and I'll let Jenny go deeper into this. There's a lot of unknowns in, in, in the, in the budget, you know, we're, we're relying on both the federal and the, and state government to, to make things work for us, so, uh, and it's kind of a week-to-week, uh, thing. And there are a lot, a lot of assumptions and forecasts that have to be changed and made and adjusted, and, and they're working hard on that. Uh, with that, Jenny, can you, uh, go deeper into?
Absolutely.
The finance stuff.
Um, so they, when we talked about the, the finance issues, they talked about them really in terms of two pieces. So there's the issue of cash flow, and then the issue of the budget forecast. So, um, how much cash do we have on hand versus, um, what our budget next year will look like? And what are the changes that we might have to make depending on the changes of revenue that are coming in, uh, potentially? So, uh, specifically on the cash side, right now, um, the projections, and there are several unknowns to this. Not all of the cash that we have on hand is, um, ours. We collect, uh, taxes for the county and the school district. So, but the project, best projection is, um, right now, without more revenue incoming, we would run out of cash in, at the end of June. Um, in terms of cash, especially with the different federal subsidies that are happening, we can borrow, and they've had better news on borrowing, but again, there's a lot of unknowns that fall into that. So, um, they're still working with the Treasurer's Office to get the exact, um, cash flow analysis, um, and they have said that, uh, that they will share that with us. That is something that, um, I've urged, because I think it's an important thing to do, uh, for us to see and actually get our hands on and look at. Um, and then I'll, before I get too deeply into the budget forecast, I also mentioned that, uh, and we have to have a finance committee meeting anyway, because we have a couple of pieces. But more importantly, I'd really like to have a finance committee meeting where we get into more of the nuts and bolts of this versus the broader, uh, you know, just the broader idea of it, so that we, any council members that want to be very, very well-versed on it, finance committee members, you just get to be in it, but, um, anybody else that wants to be really, uh, have like a deeper understanding of exactly what is happening and exactly what could be happening, um, we have that. And, uh, the mayor understood that desire and, and absolutely said that she absolutely was in favor and would, uh, direct staff to do all of that. Um, and I, you know, obviously, I'm talking with them about it, but, um, it's something I think is really important. it's something I think is really important because when, as we navigate through this, one of the big frustration points and one of the most difficult frustration points is the huge number of unknowns. We're dealing with a highly unknown situation. So so we are, we're dealing with the unknowns and dealing with the knowns, what actually works with having that fuller understanding. So the other issue is the budget forecast. So that's more of the piece of what next year's budget is going to look like. And that's when we really get into who exactly do we, you know, we look at employees who we have hiring and so the mayor is having each of the departments basically go through and come up with several different scenarios. One of the big issues with this and anybody that is working with state government or part of state government is very aware of how much is unknown. So I do understand fully what she's saying when she's saying there's a lot of, we just don't know what it's going to look like. And on the state side, they don't know either. So she has some departments looking at a more dire situation.
I'm gonna go walking when I'm done here.
So as Kelly mentioned, we are currently in a hiring freeze. We're not bringing on any seasonal workers. If there's not any indication of relief of some sort, there will be issues and there will have to be layoffs. So the mayor's office is also working with other local municipalities to see where everyone is. Albany appears to be in a better situation slightly in terms of cash flow than some other places, but that is just really a matter of degrees right now. So the possible layoffs, you know, cultural affairs, the whole cultural affairs department. Not possibly, possibly the rec department. Not hiring new police officers. Potentially having some cuts to DGS as well. These are just potentials. They have not made any decisions. And they're also, a lot of them are worst case scenario situations because potentially that's where we could be.
Jenny, I'm sorry, Jack had his hand up. I just, I didn't.
Well, I was gonna wait till she's done. I, did the mayor mention the golf course and the revenue if they're gonna open it? I don't know if that was brought up.
We didn't ask about that. We can't. The golf course is not in, in terms of revenue. I know that so you can do a golf course, but only if people kind of walk around by themselves. Just by New York State. So I don't know exactly how much we've gotten into that, but I also in terms of revenue, I know that it's not a big revenue piece. I think it kind of.
No, I agree. I'm just getting a lot of complaints about it not being open.
Got it. The golfers want to golf.
Yeah, but hold on. We don't, we don't run the golf course, correct? The city doesn't run the golf course.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. Yeah.
We collect revenue that all sets.
I know, I know we get revenue, but I didn't know we ran like.
Yeah.
Play, we collected the fee. We do that. Okay.
Yep.
Cool. We have to go sometime.
I'll take you this year.
I didn't know it was city employees. I thought it was. Okay.
I don't, we only have one full-time employee there. I don't think that it's a big staff outlet of cost. But we can certainly check in to see when it's going to be open, if it's going to be open. It might be a situation that, because that is a large park too, where people actually can go and not be around other people. So there might be the choice to prioritize people using it as a park. I don't know.
Well, that's not true. I've walked every day and there's, there's no social distancing there. That's another argument.
Okay.
Was there any talk, I know we voted on some pay increases for, to be slated for this year. Is there was any talk of freezing those pay increases temporarily until we're in a better financial position?
We did not talk about where pay increases are. That I'm assuming would be part of the discussion that the different departments are doing. So there's several different layers that they're looking at. And that is probably a, a lower impact scenario to go without slated pay increases. We are, the, the mayor's office, they're in the middle of doing these exercises right now. So we, and I'm not sure the timeline. One of the big issues is the revenue is completely unknown. So until we have some idea of what's coming from the state, which is unknown because that's depending on what comes from the federal government. So I, I know that they're talking about a lot of different pieces and obviously some departments will be hit harder than others, you know, just because it is, as much as I love the cultural affairs department. If you have to choose between that and police officers, it's kind of a no brainer.
Two things. One, I think this is why it's so important that we advocate that the federal support that we deserve because this is going to affect everybody. It's going to affect our people's taxes on the properties that they own. So when the federal government will say it's a bailout, it's not a bailout. This is the real problem that we're dealing with. When you have a loss of revenue from taxes, from sales taxes and from state aid. You know, it affects directly people's communities. I did have a question regarding the freeze on potential freeze on law enforcement.
There's no information on it right now. They threw out a million different things. That's there's not any sort of.
My follow-up is the, the class that was supposed to fill this, this class was on hold. Is that still on hold? Or is that class going to move forward and potentially put the next class?
I would assume that it's still on hold, but we can confirm that.
We have Michael Bryan next. I'm sorry. Hold on. We got muted.
In his most recent forum, is still talking about a potentially as many as a 50 officer class, the new space they have can accommodate that. And I mean, the shortage of police officers is dramatic and particularly the shortage of community police officers. I believe he only has 19 people officially designated now as community police officers, about half of what they had before. So I don't know. That's certainly, I think, a priority. And then the other point, just on golf courses. I note that the state has opened Saratoga State Park Golf Course. And Schenectady has opened their golf course and Clifton Park has opened theirs. And most of the private golf courses are open, but certainly the state of New York is opening golf courses. And I assume we have, I mean, I don't know what the operating profits were, but they were definitely into six figures. So it might be, that might be something worth opening.
The golf course didn't make a profit.
It didn't?
No.
But it pays, so all of it goes into capital debt or operating expenses?
I think Judy has more details on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, there are significant operating costs. So I say with that, with that, so there may be only one full-time year-round employee out there. But there are issues with regard to maintaining the greens and mowing the, the courses, the fairways. You know, a lot of the revenue comes from things like rental of golf court carts. And that's not even, if it opens, that's not currently allowed because then you're not socially distancing on it. I don't, I don't really know for sure. Mike, I know that generally it has not been generating a profit. A lot of the time it's been breaking even. And I think it's basically been about $800,000 worth of cost of operation versus about $800,000 worth of, of revenue. So it's not.
Fewer golfers. So I mean, it's, I, I don't think it's something that the mayor's office is looking at in terms of a revenue piece. I think it's really in terms of what our residents need. Do they need to walk around on the golf course by themselves? Or do they need to walk around without golf clubs by themselves?
Part of the revenue from the golf course also comes from tournaments. Substantial amount, which is not likely to happen. So that, that's going to be a cut too.
But I will certainly ask about it and, and if there's, you know, something a broader thought process to it, if anybody has anything passionate that they feel about the golf course, then we can certainly pass that along.
Jenny?
Yes. So I, I do want to ask the question I was asking you and Kelly with regard to.
Yes. And Judy, I have to apologize. I do not have an answer to you for that. And it is completely my fault. I wrote the email and did not send it. So
I know that feeling.
It was one of those things I went back and I was like, it's so weird. I haven't heard back from Mike yet. What is going on with that? And I looked at him like, oh, well, because I didn't send the email. So that, I'm really sorry. I will check in with him tomorrow.
If I could just fill in the rest of the council about, the question I'm asking is.
You right after.
There's a lot of employees who are making $30,000 to $40,000 a year. We have some employees who are even making less than $30,000 a year. If you take $600 of this supplemental unemployment compensation and you annualize it, it's a little over $31,000. So for, and, and you guys have probably read in the paper where some employers are upset about that $600 because they're having a hard time having people come back to work. But what I, the question I'm posing is does it make sense? Has the city done anything in terms of figuring out which employees may want to be furloughed? Cutting our costs. My understanding is that a lot of employers are doing this and, and can still pay for benefits for, for people. And, and keeping in mind that this $600 a week extra expires on July 31st. And it's a direct pass-through from the federal government. So if we have employees who are not able to provide a lot of services because of the nature of what their normal job functions are and the risks that we would be putting them at if we had them working. There, there may be a lot of employees who it would not be problematic to furlough them, have them collect unemployment along with this extra $600 a week. And there would be potentially no adverse economic impact or minimal adverse economic impact. And the city could do some savings that way and save some pain in the future. Potentially from having to do layoffs because we don't have money when we are back fully operational. Hopefully we'll get fully operational and everybody, and we will need everybody back in all the positions that we currently have budgeted. So that's kind of a, you know, a question that I'm posing. We need to be thinking outside the box. We need to be looking at every possible option. And, and hopefully this, you know, this is something that the city is already looking at because, you know, tomorrow starts May and we have three months to maximize the benefits of doing anything like this.
Just if I could say, and Judy, thank you for bringing that up. And I agree with you, with your sentiment. My only reservation is that if we echo to our city workers that if they want to, you know, voluntarily go into furlough. I'm concerned that many people might take advantage of it, which is going to cut some of the services that they provide, that the city of Albany provide to the residents. So I'm just a little bit concerned. How would that work as it relates to? To make sure that we don't lose services that we would normally have.
Yeah. I mean, I think right now it's all exactly how, if it would even work. I know that the budget department is looking at just about everything it possibly can. So if it's something that they're not already looking at, they'll be thrilled to hear more about. But I, I know that that's definitely, I, I completely agree. We don't want to lose services, especially in this time when if we are cutting things, we're, you know, we're already going to be making terrible decisions.
If I can just, if I can just comment that when I, you know, was offered an early retirement incentive. It was part of the game plan was a department had to identify those worker categories. The categories of jobs where there could be a certain percentage of cuts or a certain number of cuts. For example, you know, we don't need 100 attorneys. We can do our job effectively with 90 attorneys. So, and then it would be a matter of, you know, people with seniority being able to, you know, have that or something, you know, something along that line. That, so, so that there's ways of doing it, hopefully without picking on individuals and, or cutting services that are needed. But if, you know, but if people are not able to provide some of the services that they normally would provide and we're not really cutting services. And, and, and that would be the, you know, the positions that I would hope we would be looking at in particular.
So hold on, hold on a minute. Who's, who's waiting to be heard?
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to go back to the golf course issue. In other areas, they are allowing people to utilize golf carts, but they're making them ride by themselves. So I just wanted to put that out there in terms.
Increase revenues.
Yes, it does increase revenue. And then also, you know, people are looking for escapes, you know, people, you know, this is the most I've ever been in my, in the house in my life. So, you know, when I get out and I go to Walmart, it's almost like reminding me of the bus ride from camp before where you just saw everything in the world until you got home. So I think we need to be mindful of, you know, helping people be able to have escapes from this new, new that we're experiencing.
I'm sure that, I mean, that the mayor's office is weighing that too, but definitely appreciated. Tom, did you, you know, Richard, you've got something too?
Yeah, I guess, I think it's related to this. I mean, you know, I've got two primary concerns. One is the financial concerns that you addressed, and I think also related with, you know, ordinarily it's when school is out, but of course school is out. But with the summer coming, the weather changing, warmth, et cetera, people wanting to get out. What, what is the plan in terms of a summer program for kids? I, you know, I don't know if Lincoln Park Pool is going to be open. What's happening with the summer youth employment program? But we're going to have a lot of kids out there and, you know, looking for ways to get out. Do things be occupied? And, you know, with things closed here as well as in other places that you might go visit vacations or whatever. I'm just wondering, is that on the radar screen? What are we doing?
There is a lot of discussions on different potentials with the summer youth employment program. And even I can tell you having children of that age, even with people that have that. The big issue is it's, we don't know what you can and can't do. But you can't, it's not functioning, functionally possible to do a socially distanced program. And if we are really low, I, I mean, it's just not. And if we are really low, I mean, it's just not something that you, that's why there's no school right now. So if, if there's still a concept that you can't have children gathered in a place, you can't really do like summer programs. And then the Summer Youth Employment Program, if it's not safe for people to go to work, you certainly cannot, it's just irresponsible.
Yeah.
Yeah, all understood.
I think we're over-
There's a lot of unknowns.
I think we're weighing the weeds on this stuff. Unless the executive order changes, unless the executive order changes, everything is going to change.
They are looking at potentials with it, though you don't know.
Yeah.
There's not so much to summer.
If the, the Summer Youth Program, if the federal government does not issue another stimulus package, everything we know to be summertime will change. That is where we are. If the federal government, is, if the federal government does not issue another stimulus package, everything will change. How programming, everything. So I think for us to be having this discussion about, well, is this going to change? This going to change? Nothing is known until the federal government does or don't do something.
So I know this is all a moving target because we don't know what would, the stimulus money, if we're going to get more money. We don't know in terms of the executive order and social distancing. And, you know, the governor uses his terms, avoiding attractive nuisances, how that's all going to play out and what we can do or can't do. But the thing is, we need to be thinking about what we're doing this summer for in terms of rec programs, other programs for kids.
The department is looking at-
Try to look at all the alternatives and not, you know, last minute, try to cobble something together.
That is, that is, the department is looking at a lot of different potentials.
And that stuff is being, that was a part of the conversation, the Summer Youth Employment Program and what was going to happen with that.
They're looking at a lot of layers.
Yeah, there was a lot of unknowns. And that's why the better part of this conversation we're having, we kept saying unknown, it's, it's, it's the truth.
And one of the unknowns is if we're still in a hiring freeze, we're not going to be able to hire. I mean, so there, there's just a lot of layers to it, but they are looking at it. So, Tom, I'm sorry about that.
Well, Richard just stole my, my question for you. I was just going to ask you what you thought about, you know, have you talked about camps and the Summer Employment Program? So we've discussed it, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, they, as I said, they are looking at, they're looking at different possibilities. But there's a lot of unknowns. And even if we had all the money in the world, there's a lot of unknowns just on what, what people will be able to do and what children will be able to do.
I'm wondering if there should be, if, if, if there should be parent, some community, but more so parent involvement about if you were to structure something that, you know, how, how could we structure something that you would feel comfortable sending your child to? That, and what do you think would engage your child?
I think that's a great idea, but the big issue is we don't even know what we can do. So starting that conversation is still preemptive because there's just, there's so many unknowns. And we also don't know what we could provide. So if it's something that we can only provide a service, we'd be able to get three children in a room, we'd need to hire a huge amount, a huge staff to do that, find space for it. We might not be able to do that. So they're looking at a lot of different possibilities. But I know that the rec department is always open to bringing in different parent, like different groups to talk about things. And I'm sure that they would in that situation as well. The problem is, it's, it's hard to go forward with any specific plan because there's, there's way too many unknowns in every direction. But they are looking at a lot of different pieces.
I spoke to-
I'm sorry.
I spoke, I spoke to Paul yesterday regarding this. And basically, ultimately, he said that they're having discussions, as you said. But he said they're waiting on word from the school district because they followed the school district who was in return following what the, the governor is saying. So we really in limbo. And, you know, they did have the first sign up down at Giffen. And I think that they're talking about extending, doing some virtual signups for, just in case we, you know, we do go back to norm, they don't have to start from scratch. So it's been conversations and like, like you were saying earlier, it's hard to make a determination on something that you really have no clue what tomorrow's going to be like.
Alfredo?
I want to say one thing, two things that are very clear. We still need to continue to advocate for federal funding for state and local governments. That's been made very clear from this conversation. Another thing that's been made very clear is situations like this is why a fund balance is so important. And, you know, we have been building that fund balance throughout the last five to six years. So we're not as bad of a situation as we were, you know, six years ago, seven years ago, but we're still not where we were supposed to be. You know, I think we're roughly about 10 million and, you know, the general goal, 10% of your budget, roughly about 17 million. But we're in a lot better shape than we were a few years ago. But it's also reminded when we're going through the budget process, anything we can do to build that fund balance in the future, this is why it's critical to have it because we don't know what's going to happen. And hopefully we'll never go through this again.
I hope not. That's an excellent point, Alfredo.
Next year.
Yeah.
He, I, I also, if there's no other questions on that piece, I just wanted to let, if people are, thank you, Kelly, for driving the masks around to everybody. If anybody needs any more masks, I know I'm out already, which I was surprised at how people are really thankful for them. Brian Shea is the person to reach out to. He's the one that's kind of in charge of mask dispersment.
Can I ask, can I ask, how many, how many masks are in the packet?
There's five masks in each bag.
Okay, in each packet?
Yeah.
It's five. And yours, Richard, that I dropped off, is like a little over 100 because I just kind of threw some in.
I was just interested in how many in the actual individual packets.
And, oh, it's five, yeah.
There's five in each bag, yeah.
And also, I, I still have a number of masks that, so you, you guys wouldn't have to reach out to Brian at this point, if you need them, I'll, I'll get them to you. Because I still have some in the, in the back of the truck.
Even better, just call Kelly. And then just JR and I did a, an open meetings forum this week. And some of it was a little annoying. There was a guy that was in a nonprofit that was a little not the most pleasant to listen to you, you know. But the executive director of the Open Meetings Agency for New York spoke for a while and talked about some of the basics of open meetings law, but also some of the, her understanding of where we are right now. And, and it was really helpful, especially in terms of a transcript that she said that she would, she felt like any transcript that came from the service that you're using, so I guess that Zoom can do a transcript was completely fine, that the recording was the big piece of it. And I'm not sure if you have any other gems, JR, but it was, it was interesting and it was definitely helpful for where we are right now and kind of looking at things.
It was a good- Our staff, our staff, after our last meeting where we had the two public hearings, I was a little remiss in not acknowledging and recognizing the work that you all put into that. It was, it was, it was good, worked out, it worked out well. And can't wait till we have the next public hearing.
And I, I have to, I'd like just give an additional kudos. I, we've all been appreciating what you guys have been doing, but listening to the questions from the other, from the people that had logged into this, we are a million miles ahead of so many other municipalities. And it's really, thanks for your hard work.
Thank you, staff!
So, you got anything else?
That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a question, Kelly. Did the plasma clinic come up in your conversations with the mayor at all, the new ordinance? Okay.
No. When, can I ask, when that was transmitted to the mayor and when the 10-day clock starts?
They haven't signed it yet, so that's a good question, Richard.
But they have 10 days, so what, what's their timetable? Is it?
I'm sorry, I gave it to them and I know they had it on the 3rd. So 10 days from the 3rd.
April 3rd?
I believe so. That's when the blood, whenever the blood plasma passed, that, that Wednesday is when they had it.
Oh wait, so in April, it was April 6th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I don't remember what the date was actually.
I don't even know, every day is the 3rd.
It was last Monday, wasn't it?
It was the 20th, wasn't it?
It was the 20th, so it was when the 22nd.
They got it on that Wednesday.
Okay, the 23rd, okay.
The 22nd. You guys confusing me.
They didn't get it the 22nd, they got it the 23rd.
So that's Thursday then?
Okay. Whatever the Wednesday was after our Monday meeting.
That was the 22nd.
Okay. So the deadline, I guess my question was, is the deadline for action prior to or after our meeting on May 4th?
It's prior to May 4th. So we're supposed to, we're expected to receive something, it's prior to it. It's actually the Saturday, it's Saturday before, so it's the Saturday it's due.
Okay.
May 2nd.
And then I, after that, we, it's presented up May 4th. And then after the May 4th meeting, we have 30 days to act on it.
Okay. Assuming?
Assuming she deals it.
Yeah. I had another question or issue. Yep. I just want to bring up, I don't know if, if, if there's a trend, but there seem to be more, or a sudden spurt of gun-related incidents. Is that me seeing something or is that something? And I don't know if that's related to anything in particular.
So, so, did he just say a spurt in gun violence?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, Richard, you, you're hearing absolutely right.
I'm just going for what I see in terms of police advisories and reports that are going out.
No, you're 100% right. You're 100% right. And this is what I was saying back in January, that we have a gun, you know, we have a lot of guns on the street. We're catching younger and younger kids with guns. If you, if you pay attention in the second ward, there was a dog shot on Grand Street, you know, it was another person shot. It was a, I seen a video of people shooting Martin F., so there's a lot of violence going on right now. And thank you for bringing that up.
Yep, yep.
Is it, is it people being cooped up and nothing?
No.
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 No, and most of the other major cities where violence is a problem, it's actually, the violence is down.
Is there any merit to inviting the chief to meet with us, the caucus, or however you want to do it, a republic safety meeting to talk about some of those issues?
Yes, Richard. Yeah, I think we need to do that, not just on that issue. But I'm getting a lot of, I mean, at this time, we hope that a lot of our quality of life issues would be taken care of, you know. And we had some incidences this weekend where police officers told people, you know, they, it was people's right. I mean, this is what, direct quote, and I told the, the resident to make sure she emailed the chief, direct quote, "A person was interacting with our officers who had their mask on. They didn't have a mask on." The person said, officer, you know, that person should wear on their mask. The officer's quote was, "It is their constitutional right not to have to wear a mask." One problem we have with that, this is law enforcement. The law is you have to wear a mask when you're within six feet of somebody. So the officer didn't enforce that law. Second law they didn't enforce was another constituent went to the police station to file a complaint. There was 20 people in a, at an apartment and having a party. She went to file a complaint based off the social distance law. And the police said, there's nothing we can do, it's their apartment. So my concern is, does the chief, are they telling their police officers what the new laws are? And if they do know them, why aren't they enforcing them? So I just told the constituents, make sure they contact the chief, email them so he could have word with the department to see, you know, do our officers understand at this time, especially at this time, those quality of life issues are even greater that we must enforce?
Yeah, there's need to be some way to enforce. I'm also concerned, in line with that, Corey, going to the summer and everything else. And I think a lot more people have been spending time at home and in their backyards. And I'm seeing, you know, open fires and fire pits and things like that that I'm, you know, get concerned about and other activities that might be happening that are quality of life issues like that, just because there's no place else to go.
So I think we do need to have a discussion on that, we really do.
We'll just, we'll, we'll do a public safety meeting rather than pulling them into a caucus that we can commit most of the time to just dealing with that issue. So I'll get together with Michelle and we'll come up with a date for that meeting.
Great.
Anything else? Anyone have anything else?
But if, and if, if for our leadership meetings, if anyone comes up with, you know, questions or comments or things, you know, you can, you can always email us or give us a call to say, hey, can you add this into the conversation or, or talk about this or that? Because I mean, we got a lot of stuff going on now. It's, it's, this is different. This is, we're in a different time now.
I have a question.
Okay. Question, Kelly. I would just speak to Zach Simpson with PEG Access. And essentially he gave some proposal. I'm not sure if it was sent to all members, but have anyone taken a look at it? And are we?
Haven't seen it.
Yeah, have you, have you seen it?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, so I guess Michael Bryan has the proposal. So hopefully he can forward it to all council members. But I think that it would be great to take action.
I have it.
Being in 21st century and side of the chamber.
Yeah, I can send it to everybody. I, I thought it went out to council leadership. The PEG Access Board voted to approve it. I forget the exact dollar amount. They, they have, 10 years ago, Time Warner gave them $300,000 for equipment and they spent about half of it. So they have well over 100,000 remaining in the account. And this proposal was for the council chamber and also a portable system for when we do our caucuses in the courtroom. And it would be an audio and visual recording system. And I forget the price tag, I remember it's roughly somewhere around $85,000, $90,000. But I can send it out if, if you want it. I, I thought it was already distributed.
Yeah, I was kind of confused. I thought leadership already had it. But in any case, Mike, if you could send it to all council members, that would be quick. I think you would be going to take action now instead of waiting.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think Zach has our, never mind. This remind, they're reminded, our franchise agreement, by the way, as people may remember, actually expires at the end of this year. And last time I, I think leadership checked with this, there's really nothing going on as far as negotiating a new franchise agreement or whatever we're doing, and that the administration was planning just to do a year-to-year extension of what we're doing right now. So I don't know if that's still the case or not, but it's hard to start a negotiation.
Does it come up for a vote in front of us as relates to?
Yes, yes, we have to approve it.
We have to approve the, the, the extension or, or the contract, not the purchase of the new equipment.
Will they come in front of the council, like a finance meeting?
Yeah.
No, there has to be a negotiation. And there was the last time, which involved a committee. But I don't think anything is happening with that.
And then what, in our conversations, it was, it didn't seem like much was going on before this, before COVID happened. So a lot of things have been on the back burner. So what we'll do, make it point to, you know, go back over all of these issues and review the requests and conversations that we had in previous meetings and get updates on all of them. I'm assuming with everything going on, it probably, we haven't done much with it, but-
You mentioned it this past-
It'll be a reminder.
Yeah, but the one before and there was nothing going on with it.
Yeah.
So it, we definitely should have mentioned it this past one too, but as of the one before, there was nothing happening with it. So, well, I got it on my list.
I have a lot of questions for Spectrum Greed, so it'll be great when they come in front of us.
I don't know if they'll come in front of us or whoever. Well, we'll see.
Represents them.
Yeah. Jenny, I just got a fast question. I just thought of it. The Living Wage Committee, we appointed somebody like last year and we're still waiting for the city, the mayor's office to put up. Can you follow through on that?
Yeah, and that was, that was when I just said that, that, that's included in that batch of requests or follow-ups that we have to do, so.
Just, just clarify, Tom, we didn't actually appoint anybody. The mayor makes the appointments. We confirm that. There was one name that was submitted. But we were waiting, I think the idea was we were waiting for her to submit a full slate of appointees that we can see as a whole, rather than do it piecemeal. And nothing has happened on that.
Nothing's happened.
I think there are actually two names that they have right now out of the five.
Five.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, everyone, no one has anything else, motion to adjourn?
Oh. So, yes. Thank you.
No, anyone want to stay on with the woo-soo? So you still there?
I have a message for Jeannie and, and Judy. Ray Calucciello sends his regards. He asked me to make sure that I send his regards.
Oh, I love Ray.
Still recording?
Yeah.
We still have a quorum here. Can't stop.
Okay.
I'm gone.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Be safe.
Good night.